Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the September 25th meeting of the Planning Board of West Hampton Beach. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a resolution for 55 and 59, Old Riverhead Road. Is anybody here for the applicant? Will you waive the reading of the decision?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the decision. The resolution is written.
So moved.
Check. All in favor?
Aye.
Phil's application's still on hold. Okey-dokey. So the first item up for bids is West Hampton NLLC, 43 Main Street.
They want an extension request?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the applicant be compelled to appear before us to justify their extension request before we take a vote.
They won't come in, right?
I mean, we told them they should appear, but...
If they can't be bothered to appear before the board to ask permission, then I don't see why we should be bothered considering their request.
They haven't done anything on that site that we requested so far. I want to go on record as saying that this has been a blight on the village all summer long. Last time they did appear here, we did ask them to clean up the site, and there's been no action. It's just been deteriorating.
My recollection was when they gave me the extension request, he said, "As soon as I'm done with my project at Laurel Hall, I'll be breaking around." And I think we pinned him down. Laurel Hall was going to be done March of earlier this year, and obviously no shopping.
And that's really not our problem. In any case, we're not going to take any action on this application predicated on the applicant not appearing. Well, if they want to have an extension, I think they should. Or they want to make their case for an extension. At this point, I think there's a question of whether or not an extension will be granted. Okay. Next is Waterfront Equities LLC, Library Avenue. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Always a pleasure to see you.
All right. So it was 20 years ago when we started, but the last time I was here in 2014. So we had decisions made on it, and I had it recorded with the county.
Would you stand up at the... I'm sorry. We gotta put you on video.
You got a face for the camera.
Talk to me over here. So in April, in 2014, we recorded the decoration that was done by the board and the variances and everything else. So we're looking just to update this and get ready to rock and roll with it.
Pretty substantive changes to the application?
No, exactly the same.
Well, I mean, in light of the fact that we're 10 years in, this is a new application. It's not refreshing an old application. So any fees and obligations that you have along those lines are required. Now, I can't help but notice when we're looking at the site that while there are no permits hanging there, we've had a significant amount of work going on there recently.
I was just bringing some utilities down while I had time to do it, and I was just planting some trees, moving some trees around.
Well, we did a lot. We did a lot, okay? And I noticed there were no permits there. And apparently that worked for you. I don't know how, but apparently that worked for you. Now, all we're doing tonight is reviewing the application that had been residing here for 10 years. So Ron, we'll start with you. Did you look at any of the work that was done down there?
I didn't look at any of the work. I didn't know any work was being done down there.
I'd heavy equipment there for at least the last three weeks, and there was significant, I guess it was sewage and...
No. All we did was, and obviously, I don't know, if I needed a permit, normally we don't need a permit to... I just brought a water line down, and I abandoned one water line, a water main that was in the middle of the property.
Well, you're doing things on a site that you don't have any permits for. Is that what you're saying to us?
Well, it's not. I wasn't building anything. I was...
You're making changes to a site that you don't have any permits on.
You'd have to expat if I would need a permit to plant some trees and just prep the site and put like water line in or... I didn't do any sewage or anything like that. It was just, it was electrical. I put conduit in, just prepped stuff and put, I had that RCA pad there for a long time.
Without a permit.
I don't think I need a permit, but if I do, then I would file for a permit. I just have to expat if I would need a permit for it.
Is there a question for me?
Yeah.
I wouldn't expect to see more than what's there.
Did anybody come into you and tell you that this was going to be happening?
A water service or electrical service that will be used for construction. I understand, this is a developer in the village who works on many projects. It was, I had no, I don't have the history of doing work without a permit, so in my mind, it's nothing to get worked up there. I understand.
Did anybody look at any of the work that was done?
There's no, there's no work that's done on the...
But we've got conduit buried from one side of the property down to the water side of the property.
Conduit, it's electrical conduit?
It's just conduit here and water lines, which was inspected by the... I do have a health department permit, so I technically have a permit to do that stuff because the water line and that stuff, I have a health department permit to put the water line in through the health department, and they inspected it. So the health department did issue me a permit already. I have active health department permits for, which is put in, the water, health department inspects the water line and the water authority inspects the water line. What it was, there was an existing water main in the middle of the property, which shouldn't have been there. So the water authority took that water main and moved it out to the street where it was supposed to be, and the health department issued me two health department permits for both lots. So I have health department approval for Lot 1 and Lot 2.
I have a question. Not being safe.
But you don't have a subdivision.
You're not supposed to put the sanitary system in unless, unless we give local approval.
Yeah, but I didn't put sanitary in. I just did the water line that they had approved, where the location of it.
We do, having onsite electric and having onsite water even before my permits are issued tend to be a positive thing because it means less people running off the generators and having water to help with when, when there's no...
I just don't think it's unreasonable to ask somebody to come in and say something.
I, I don't disagree.
You know, and then you could be sitting in front of the board saying, "Yep, I told him he could do it."
Rocco knows I don't like seeing him sometimes, so he probably, he's doing me a favor.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. Rocco, when did you start the work on 17 Library? I see heavy equipment out there. In August, July?
I just brought stuff over there, and I pretty much just, I had from a long time ago, we had a RCA drive in there. This got overgrown, so I just cleaned that up, brought some more material in, and I trenched the two lines in. The water authority was over there probably around like three weeks ago when they, three, four weeks ago when they moved their service, and I just did maybe like three days of work. I mean, I'm planting some trees now. I mean, I don't, do I need a permit to plant the trees?
Well, I'm not finished yet. Was your work being done in August?
I think it was done probably end of August. I mean, the machines were sitting there in August, but nothing was being done. We just did it last month.
Okay.
Just in September, we did it, like in the beginning of September.
Okay. Having no permit is one issue. The other issue is starting a job during those summer months that we have a moratorium on. Am I right, Brad?
If there's a variance, I don't, I don't think there's any variance. Well, I don't have, I don't have a building permit application.
Yeah. We did it in September.
That would be the other issue, starting during that time. You remember the hole in the ground that we had on Seaford Lane? Everything stopped for three months.
Definitely, you're correct.
To be accurate, though, the variance is probably expired. So, you know, arguably, that variance has expired, the condition's probably expired. There is no variance, so I, I don't know. I wouldn't get crazy about that issue unless he violated some code provision, which I don't, I think Brad's saying he doesn't know of any.
If it applies to residents, it should apply to everyone.
It doesn't, though. It applies through...
With zoning, I know that, with a variance, right. I know that. I experienced it.
All right, let's not belabor this, okay? What actions do we need to take on this application tonight?
Chair, may I speak? We do need to see, for our file, we need your zoning board, your current zoning board. If you haven't extended it, we don't have anything on our files that shows that's still valid, so we can't proceed without knowing that the lot area and road frontage variances are still valid.
I recorded them. I mean, I think I sent this in to you guys.
No, 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 that's different.
Is that right?
Those were the covenants that were, were done as part of the subdivision that's now expired. The issue is, you had to get variances from the zoning board for the lot area and frontage. Those variances don't last forever, so they're expired too. So you're going to have to go back to the zoning board to get those renewed. You're also going to have to show us that the DEC approval is either still valid or you're going to have to go get that renewed.
Yeah, everything's been updated.
I think those only last 10 years. So if you got the DEC permit for the subdivision, because they have to stamp the subdivision, you're going to have to get that renewed.
We had two DEC. We had condos approved on it. The property is allowed, we had a four condo unit thing on that property that was approved by the DEC and the health department, and then we modified it. We got the stuff here, and then we went back to the DEC, and then it was a less intense use and the DEC just extended that.
I don't doubt, I don't doubt they will. Rocco, I don't doubt they'll approve it.
Chuck from Land Use already has everything others, so I'll get you everything.
But you're going to have to get a new approval from them.
Yep. We already have it, so I just got to get it over to you. And we got the health stuff from the health department as well.
The health department, we have submitted in the file, they're fine.
Yeah. So I have to go back to zoning then, that's what you're saying.
We have the subdivision?
Yes.
What will happen is...
From June 25th to 25th.
Any conditional final approval, assuming you get it from this board, will say that the, the final map that gets presented to the zoning board, the planning board for signature, has to have the health department stamp on it and the DEC approval noted on it. So you have time. It's not like you have to get it to us tomorrow, but the, before the signature is going to happen on any plan, it'll have to be stamped by the right people.
Yeah, the health department, you have the health department ready, which the health department would do it only if they had the DEC stuff there, so I'll have everything together. I have all that stuff, so I'm not concerned about that. Now, I just, I got to refile for a zoning board of appeals, which I didn't know about. So I have to go back to zoning.
Given the passage of time, do we have to redo secret?
The last, that's the last matter is that I circulated the secret determination to the board from 2013. It was listed as a, sorry, it was identified as an unlisted action at that time, and this board rendered a neck deck on October 10th of 2013. The board should consider whether the conditions are still the same or reaffirm that prior decision, and if that's the case, or if they want to redo secret. If you just want to reaffirm it, we can include it in the decision. If you want to redo it, you just have to direct.
All right, we'll wait for Rocco to get the rest of the paperwork in before we take any more actions from this board. I would ask Rocco that you don't build anything there without permits.
I'm not building anything. I was just going to plant some trees.
No more work.
What's that?
No more work there.
Can I not plant trees?
Well, we don't have a landscape plan from you, so no, I guess you can't. Isn't that the way it usually works with landscape plans?
You're allowed to plant trees on a property. I mean, I don't know what, what difference what a tree is.
You're, you're allowed to plant trees, but I guess what the, what the chair is saying is, if for some reason the approval from this board says you have to plant different trees, don't whine to them about, "I have to remove these trees that I planted because I planted them in the wrong place, and now the board wants me to do it differently." So that, that's your call. I'm not going to tell you, you need a building permit to plant a tree on your property, but we get that sometimes where, had it recently, where a bunch of trees go up and they say, "Well, we don't want to move them now." Even though it's not in accordance with the plan, we don't want to move them.
Well, I have a, I have a history with the town and the board. I think whatever I plan is going to be in the best interest for the village, because pretty much everything I do is in the best interest of the village. I'm trying to make things nicer, not worse, so I'm not going to do anything that's...
But you do it without permits.
Okay.
I have a question on the site plan. When I compared it to the old site plan, the original site plan, 2013, had a swell at the end of the driveway that I suppose to capture drainage from.
Yeah, that swell, that swell was left over from the, the swell was left over from the condominium complex. So that, that was a...
See how you're standing? I didn't see how you're answering drainage from the driveway.
There's drywells in the, in the driveway. There's drywells along the driveway at the bottom end of it, and there's drywells on the property for the roof runoffs.
Roof runoff, I think.
Yeah. The swell, the swell was when we had the condos with all the runoff from the condos and everything. Chuck from Land Use did that swell in the wetlands and kind of created a ponding area, and the DEC doesn't want that anymore because there's no need for it, because they don't want any runoff going into that area. So everything's contained on site with the drywells in the driveway. Yeah.
My recollection from the first iteration from the condos is you had a lot more impervious areas.
Yeah, I mean, it was too massive building.
Last time, we spent a lot of time making sure it was pervious driveways and whatnot.
That was the 13...
Well, is there a driveway, a common driveway plan? Because this says, "See detail," and I don't see a detail on it.
No, there's a, it shows a, you have a subdivision map that shows a common driveway going down the, the south side of the property.
No, I have a subdivision map that shows a common driveway easement, and then it says in parent, "See..."
It's an easement because it's, the front lot is...
Let me finish, let me finish. I get it, Rocco. I get that's where the easement's going to be, but what is the actual common driveway plan with drainage structures and all? We, we should have a plan somewhere, probably approved from the last application. I'm not seeing the details anywhere on this plan.
Well, it's a gravel driveway, so I mean, it's just going down the side. You're talking about the drainage on the property? I'm confused what you're asking about.
Is it... Can, can one of you guys explain this?
The plan says, "See detail," but there's no detail. So maybe that's the second page, or is this...
It's probably, it's probably, it's probably related to the other stuff, but I'll, I'll ask the surveyor.
There's usually a common driveway plan that shows the specs of the, the common driveway, the drainage structures, the grading, et cetera. We probably had that back 10 years ago. It just needs to be included on this.
Your, your plan doesn't have structures to the driveway. It says pervious driveway, no drainage.
Yeah, this was the original one, back in the day.
There's two different ones, Tony.
Oh, you're looking at the one with the...
Yeah.
But this doesn't have any details as to what that purpose drives is. There are no drainage structures, but maybe okay, driveway...
Right, but that's your job to review.
The drainage structures are the ones in the back.
It's a roof drain.
Yeah, driveway and roof drains are the grates on it.
But if you look at the calculations, you only see calculations for the, the house.
Am I the only one with one of these?
No, you have one.
This is the original one.
I don't have one.
So that, you're looking at the health department. You asked for, this is the one you asked for with nothing on it. This is the original one that was approved back in the day. This is like the original one that was approved back in the day, and then that was updated.
Funny part is, I probably still have one of them.
There's a detail sheet. But I'm telling you, there's a detail sheet somewhere.
If this was there, maybe it's, it was a...
I don't think so.
...iPhone, but...
We would always want to see how the driveway is constructed.
That's my point. It's like, it exists.
I'll show you detail.
Is it curved? Is it not curved?
I don't know if it was there, but...
Trust me, it was there.
I'll look in the file. I'll check. Well, you can do a detail if it's not a big deal.
I get it. I'm just asking you to...
Yep, we'll do a detail of it.
Something that's changed, too, is we codified flag lots. It used to be they would send you to a variance for the flag lot. We've now codified it, but there's code language about a common driveway too, so we might have to update the plan for the common driveway.
So all we need is a complete plan that's up to date.
Oh, you didn't, you just need a driveway detail, right? And a drainage calculation to check that.
You need calculations for the driveway. If you're doing a pervious driveway, we've done that.
It's got to be a DEC driveway, so it has to be gravel, no matter what.
That's fine. It just...
We know, we all know what we need.
Depth of the, of the gravel has to reflect the drainage calculation. You end up with, I don't know, eight, eight or 12 inches of block of gravel, but you have enough space for it to go in.
Okay. Yeah, so it's going to be like a pea gravel. DEC is usually pea gravel with a metal edge. That's how we most likely do it.
Whatever the construction is, it shows...
Yeah, I'll show a cross-section of it, and then they'll see, I'll look at the calculation. I'll talk to Wicks and see what he did with the calculation and the drainage.
And then common, we're in common, and then you go into another driveway for the new one.
Yeah, it goes into the first house, and the first 20 feet, it goes into the first house.
Yeah.
So there, it's really, the driveway is for the back house, pretty much. The first 20 feet goes into the house, and then that's it, the front house. And then we'll all go over to drainage. They'll do a detail showing a drain cover on top, the two drains out there, and for the roof drains too. So the, the roof drains will go into that, and then...
Hold on, hold on. For our purposes, this board don't need to see the houses.
We don't need the roof drains.
This is just a subdivision of the land. Your, your house development is a building permit issue. It's going to complicate this board's job to have the house.
Okay, who's just asking me for it, that's why.
It does, it doesn't really go with what these guys have to do.
All right.
So I, I think you're confusing things. If you add two houses and the full development plans, it's not really necessary for a subdivision approval.
Okay, so I'll just take that regular plan that you have that shows no houses on it.
This one.
Do a driveway section of it, and then show the drywells at the bottom of the driveway.
And then we can get the subdivision plan approved.
Yeah. And then I'll just, I got to do a zoning board application, you're saying.
Chair, you have to make a determination whether you want to have a public hearing or not.
Don. First, Anthony, what's her obligation to have a public hearing or not?
Normally, you would have an obligation to have a public hearing, but given that there was a public hearing 10 years ago, the question... Let me finish the...
All right.
You asked me a question. Don't shake your head before I give you the answer.
You're 10 years ago.
The question is, have there been enough changed circumstances or potential changed circumstances to warrant another hearing? It's your call. You can waive it, or you can have it. Normally, you have it. It's your call.
Have you talked to your neighbor that will be knocking down that 1880 house, building a house? Have you been in contact with them?
Yeah.
Have you been in contact with other neighbors there?
I spoke to both neighbors on both sides. I mean, obviously, the neighbor on the one side, everybody's a lot happier in the situation that we're not building condos there, which we have a right to build, and we're just doing two single houses there.
Right.
And then the neighboring property that's going up, which I think Chris Bench is building, I spoke to him about it.
Right.
It's a family member or something like that, and that's like a two-family residence that's going up there supposedly, I guess.
If I lived on Library in the area, I would want a public hearing.
I think 10 years, a lot of the residents who may have gone to a public hearing are no longer here. The number of the board members that are here now weren't here, so I don't see, Larry, a public hearing, I think, is a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
I'll just go with the flow. I don't think it's necessary, but if the board feels that way, then fine.
You're asking me if...
Ron, Rocco.
We know what you want. Thanks.
I'm okay without it.
All right, then it's me. Well, I say that 10 years is too long, so I say we go for a public hearing. So it's three to two. Are we okay with that, boys?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I think they first need to submit, we haven't made a secret determination. I mean, I think they first need to submit, he needs to submit everything, have a work session, and then have a hearing. Because we don't have enough that...
Okay, so we'll see you at the next one.
No, not the next one. You have to get everything in by the deadline, so I'll email when you say tomorrow all the notices. You have to apply to the zoning board, too.
Yeah, the zoning board is separate, right? So that has to do with that.
Okay, applying, because it's going to hold you up here.
So I can't, you guys can't make a determination without the zoning board?
That's correct.
So then I have to go to the zoning board, go through that whole process, and then I have to go through public hearings for a less intense use that I'm not allowed to do on?
Well, what you have to do is get the rest of the documentation we've just asked you for in.
Well, all it is is a cross-section.
I know, it's always, always, all, it's always all it is.
No. Apply to the zoning board, wire your documents, you'll work through the public hearing with this, and the two will probably just go in.
Yeah. I don't think we're trying to push you out any further. We can work together.
That's what I'm asking, because normally...
They can't render a decision here without the zoning board, so you need to go to the zoning board.
So when can I get into the, the public hearing? Can I get in next month? When does that have to be recorded by? Does the letter have to go out?
Get it, get everything to us by, I don't know, the cutoff date, I think it's next week, but I'll check with you tomorrow. That'll be October 23rd.
So I'll get it into you on Tuesday next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we've got a site plan review. West Hampton Beach 10 Realty LLC, 132 Main Street, Unit 10. That's the dentist's office.
Hi there.
Hi. State your name and...
Yeah, my name's Therese Fay.
And you are with who?
I, I own the real estate property, and then I'll be moving my dental practice to that location, hopefully.
Okay. I hope you like it.
Hi. My name is Iucen, I U C A T E N, I C Engineering, 380 Tresnaud Drive, Ross, Mon, Five something. So I'm with that.
Would you like to show us what you got?
So the scope of work is we are converting 3 number 10, which is on the second floor, from a full-time contractor office into a kind of like by appointment only medical office. So we basically change the use from a full-time use into a part-time medical office, which going to reduce the previous parking demand. I understand this is kind of a grandfather situation because the building did not provide any parking to, to meet today's code requirement. So we kind of like make it better, you know, we have, like, I will explain the business later, but if I understand correctly, we only have three days a week. By appointment only. And we have basically three exam rooms.
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah, three exam rooms, but actually will be one doctor, one assistant, one phone desk, and, and one more.
Hygienist.
Hygienist, and only one. So, by doing that, um, so we kind of make the current situation even better, to comply, you know, try to, try our best to comply with today's code. And also, I heard, uh, the sewer connection was approved. So, when we convert to a medical office, I understand there will be more sync, because, you know, for the hygiene purpose, health department requirement, you know, enhancing, and also others, uh, for, for the medical use purpose. But, since we are connecting to this, uh, the city sewer system, so by the time we open the business, it will be, you know, kind of like, not adding any burden to the existing schedule. So we're going to use the sewer. And also, the building provides, uh, the ADA assets, since we are on the second floor, so we have a stair to go up, to go to our unit. And also, the building has existing elevator, ADA compliant, and also they provide ADA bathroom in the public hallway. So, we cannot address the ADA sewer parking. So we're trying everything in our control, try to make it, you know, make it pass, and of course, we need a board blessing and respectfully request, you know, approve of our application.
I don't know if we're in the blessing business, but... How do our experts feel about this application?
I thought the submission was, was well thought out, and if that's, seems like no nights and weekends are our big parking issues, we talked about last time, it coincides with restaurant dinner time, and this, this kind of seems like it's... It works.
Anthony, do you have any input on this application?
No, I thought you sent a, a, a point-on letter about what you were doing there, and your, your specialization in dentistry, um, and, um, I thought that was a good letter, and, um, I, I wish you the best of luck.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Larry?
Yep.
No, I think it's fine. Mr. Riley?
I think it's great, I'm glad that we're starting this, hopefully see some more professional businesses come back in that don't have to do with selling real estate.
Yep.
You know, I, I read the letter, and I thought it was a very good description, and I liked it.
I appreciate it.
So, um, our next action will be to...
Put on the resolution for the night.
So be it.
Do you need...
We'll see you on the night, you don't necessarily even have to show up, I think you...
Don't have to.
You can be assured that you'll get a positive resolution.
Okay. Alright, if you need any questions or something, feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
For your work.
We welcome you to the neighborhood. Okay. One oh four West Hampton LLC, one oh four Main Street.
Good evening, good afternoon, whatever it might be. James N. Hume, three two three Mill Road, West Hampton Beach, for the applicant. As the board is aware, um, we, we submitted a plan which we attempt to address, um, the comments, uh, made by the professionals and the board the last time around. And I received yesterday, I think, the comments from Ron, I, I think we're pretty much in agreement with his analysis of what we submitted. The memo seems to suggest a need for some variance relief. And I think he identified what it is that we need to get the relief for, but to the extent that there's still technical questions, Mike Albert is here tonight, and he'll be happy to address any of those.
Hi, Michael Albert. I did want to address very quickly, so that if there are questions, each of the topics that have previously been addressed. And of course, the first one being the ADA compliance. So by stepping the entrance of the building back into the X-zone, we're able to eliminate the need for railings and ramps. That the entrance to the store will be level with the existing sidewalk. So, no railing, no ramp. The question of parking, there are four spaces, um, required, and we've submitted with the R and M and the landscape plan, that we will need two additional spaces. So we will have to seek those, that relief from the ZBA. Sanitary, uh, the property is connected to sewers, it's twenty-five point four gallons, it's de minimis, and so, that's very easily addressed. Storm recharge is on-site, it's eighty gallons, and it's already there, we're gonna relocate the bleaching galleys that are present on the site, that are located at the new footprint. The square footage i- is compliant, and, um, meets the under fifty percent. The question of the setback, we're gonna need a variance for that, so as to meet ADA, and also the uniqueness of this site in particular. It seems that the sidewalk that was installed goes to the front of the Element building, and it's already seven feet on the subject parcel. So by us pushing the front of the building back, to be consistent with the planning designs, that the building be a little bit smaller, lower, and comport with what's already there in the Element building. We wind up with seven feet back from the existing front of the Element building. So ordinarily, we'd need two foot of relief, but in this particular case, the parcel comes forward into the sidewalk seven feet as well. So in reality, we need nine foot of variance. Now, that was all approved, uh, when the parcel was subdivided and granted zoning relief. So even though it was setback seven feet, there's a variance in place for the existing building, and the new building will be seven feet behind the front of Element. So I don't know if I'm clear on that, but basically, the village paved seven feet of sidewalk all across the front of the subject parcel, it shrinks a little bit as you get to the corner of Glovers. And one item of import was the privet hedge, and I went back and measured it again for the umpteenth time. And only about fifteen feet of the rear portion of the addition does the privet step onto the property line. So, the first thirty-five feet of the privet are clearly village property. The worst section of the privet, there are about four of them, that are really horrible, and should be replaced with something nicer. So that, uh, to Engineer Hill's comments about the grade beam and the excavation for it, uh, your concern is that the privet will not survive.
Yeah, I, I should say that, I was out there today, and I looked at where the property line was, at, at least in the front, there's better separation than I, than I thought there was. You can clean it, a little paint, survey it must have marked the property line. And then, you're right, when you get to the back, the, the hedge back there is...
It's four inches, it's four inches onto the property line at the base of the privet.
You know, I really don't see what the privet conversation is about, this privet isn't gonna survive a construction project.
Well, I have to tell you that...
Yeah, I mean, that's gotta be part of the, you know, part of the plan if there is a...
If we have to replace it, I drew a landscape design.
We've seen your landscape designs, I think they're just a little premature in the topic.
Perhaps, but I have to tell you that I've been in the nursery business for fifty years, I think I mentioned that last time.
Yeah.
And if there's a way to save it, Michael Albert will save it.
Okay, we appreciate that.
But if not, we will replace it.
Alright, I, I don't think we need to spend any more time on the privet, let's advance.
The building inspector asked to make sure that we were ten foot from the, uh, second building, the salon building, and we are. Regarding photometrics, we've selected the lamp company, and I realize that it's premature and it's a building permit issue, and, but we will certainly meet the code requirements for the lumens. And, uh, I have, uh, a packet for you on the manufacturer, if you want it.
It's premature.
Okay.
Because we need to, you, we need to see the drainage calculations, and a lot of other things that are part of a complete site plan.
Well, what's...
We're not there yet.
That, that's premature now.
Yes, I understand, R and M did do the drainage calculations, uh, they're, they're missing a topo line, uh, just, they wanted to show the, but yes, we'll address all that, the calculations have been done for additional stormwater. We made a trash can area, we are doing grade beam construction, so the depth that we are actually gonna go, those grade beams will sit on helical piles with caps. And the maximum depth of excavation, guesstimate right now, is about two and a half feet. So, this is why I feel I may have a shot at, uh, saving the privet and being minimally, um... upsetting with the amount of material that we're gonna dig down into. We do not anticipate taking any fill off-site. And of course, the architectural design meeting, they prescribed, um, compatibility ideas of being somewhat smaller than the master building, and slightly setback, and matching the architectural details. So, that's the story. We'd like to go to the zoning board of appeals for the two parking spaces, and the seven-foot relief for the setback, as opposed to zero to five.
Alright, as per the setback, I, I don't agree that a variance is needed for that. If you're building a new building on Main Street, it can't be sent more back, setback more than five feet, but this is an addition, and it, as an addition, articulation is, is fine. Like, it's, it's whether or not this board thinks it's appropriate to have some articulation, I think it'd be, I think it'd make sense to send it back, because there was concerns about the overall massing of this big building, and, and so I don't agree with that part. But, something you said about moving into the X makes it, we can be flush with, that's not true at all, so let's not do that. It's still an addition, but you're gonna build in the X, you're gonna build it to, you're gonna build it to, if it's attached to this other building, which it's gonna serve as this other building, it's gonna be at the correct elevation, but you should be able to work that out and make it compliant. We don't want to tack on things to a building to make it so that that original building could never be lifted, that doesn't, that, that is counterproductive, so...
Well, the question is that we are still under the required square footage to trigger...
It still has to, correct, it still has to do that.
Well, but we don't trigger that, we are under the fifty percent rule. So, and I believe you and I had discussed this, and we both...
As a horizontal addition, I didn't depend on it, but...
We don't have to lift the building based on the under dollar-wise, and you had done the calculations at about eight hundred and fifty...
Sure, but I don't, I don't like the idea of setting it below the...
Below.
Below, or than the, than I think that we're set to for the rest of the building.
Well, but we're in the Zone Ten. Zone Ten does not require meeting...
Alright, this, this is a conversation, like, you're through the flood, he's the floodplain administrator, you have to satisfy him, has nothing to do with the planning board, so you better satisfy him, or make changes to your plans, but that doesn't have to happen here, that conversation. But to satisfy him, okay?
I, I, it only matters insofar as the height and the articulation, which is an aesthetics issue.
I, I agree, but, but you get to make the call, and he, and if he doesn't like it, he can appeal it to the zoning board. That's, that's how you do that, like, you don't argue, there's no point arguing here.
My apologies.
Okay. So, you gentlemen will settle that issue.
Britton, do you have anything on this, that we don't already know of?
I just, um, I, I think architecturally, it's just too large for the space, the real estate that's there, I think it could really benefit from even like a three or four foot reduction in width, just to give, you know, move that western wall in four feet, if you can move it closer to the street, then capitalize on that square footage, I just, it's too much of a massing block in the view shed to the public park. I, I just have, I have a hard time with this one aesthetically, and then that wall is, you know, it has one circular window, it just doesn't, it's gotta be more architecturally attractive for me to even overlook, that it's, I think it's too large for this...
I don't think we really need your opinion at this point, Ron, do we?
Well, I just want to make a point about the, and, and maybe we had discussed the parking, that the parking is kind of irregular, and as shown now, there's a variance for needing two spaces. Board has to determine whether it thinks kind of the oddity of what's being proposed, with the backing out on the Glovers, and, and not making this typical aisle dimension. The planning board kind of has to give a, I think, a relief to that, and I'm not quite sure if that's planning board's intention, so we have to go with the...
It may be both, and the reason I say that is, I mean, you, you guys still have to decide whether a parking plan works, circulation parking, that's typical site planning, so, that part of it, if you were to decide it doesn't work, then they're not actually providing three spaces, which means their variance to the zoning board might be different.
Yeah.
But, I don't know about, like, if you don't, are you saying it doesn't provide the required widths that are in the code?
Well, parking spaces do, the exit driveway onto Glovers is eighteen feet, I think, and usually, our code says that driveway aisles with two-way flow have to be twenty-four feet.
Right.
This is a little unusual, because if you go in there, you have to back out, so you kind of can't have two-way flow at the same time anyway, so it's, it's, it's...
It's on, it's on a one-way, too.
Yeah.
It's typically...
Yeah. If it's, if it's a one-way in, down the road is the one-way out, you know, that could go down to, I think, fourteen, sixteen, something like that, but this is gotta accommodate people coming in, people going out, plus, you have to back out. And our code doesn't say specifically it's not allowed, but traditionally, the way we discuss parking in commercial areas...
But that goes to the first point, which is, this board has to decide that it's an appropriate plan.
Correct.
For circulation, but...
Now, I would also say that there is currently underlying that there is a space there now, that if it's, you know, a single, full-foot driveway, it goes in, and you could stack two cars in it, I think, we only count one, because then you have car blocking, you know, you can't...
Well, that's inevitable.
But that's also a pre-existing condition.
Correct.
They're, they're proposing to change the parking lot, lot into whatever that, that is.
Three parking spaces, a trident parking location.
Trident parking, I like that. That's a question, I mean, I don't...
Yeah.
You guys have to decide whether you want to do that or not, whether you want to allow two more in-and-out spaces. I get the trouble, like, you gotta wait, you gotta wait.
You have to wait.
So, I mean, that's something you should grapple with, I think earlier on, because it's gonna dictate what relief they have to get from the zoning board, whether it's two spots, or three spots, or four spots.
Don, do you have a comment?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for being here, Mr. Albert, and, um, I was here for your first meeting that you came here, and we went over all our objections, one of which, I mirror Britton's opinion about the large building on the west side, we seem to be getting away from that structure on the west side, okay? Right on the property line of the village, after we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on that park recently, okay? The fact that, um, you, you didn't change anything from that first meeting, the only thing you did was, you got represented by council for the second meeting, thinking that things were gonna just be okay, well, they're not okay, okay? The building on the west side's a problem, and I, I think, I don't want any more cars going out on Glover, backing out, I mean, if there's some way we could circulate it, it would be great. I walk that street every day, almost, every morning, okay, and during the high season, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there, and I don't know if we need any more cars coming out, backing out of the driveway.
Well, I agree with you, and one of the most underutilized parking fields in the village is a block away. Everybody can walk to that, we could covenant that anybody that leases this space must park in that field, it's always never fifty percent full, it's always...
That's irrelevant.
That, that's irrelevant.
Well, but it's close enough for us to walk to it.
But that has nothing to do with this application.
The backing out of Glovers, unless you've never been on Glovers during the high season, okay, and experienced it, it's a pedestrian walkway, okay? The street is a pedestrian walkway, we don't intend it to be that way, but it is the way it is.
Yeah, and there's a big parking...
And, and, and the west side building next, you know, we, we talked about the privet, and I want to bring up the privets again, but how close are the privets, okay, closer to Main Street, you're what, a foot away?
From Main Street.
The building, the, the west side building.
I'm sorry?
Do you have a copy?
I do have a copy of my card.
No, it's, it's not adjacent to... Oh, it'll be a foot and a half from the new building.
Eighteen inches.
Yes.
Okay.
No.
I, I just, my, my feeling is, you just have to go back and, and do some things over, I mean, I don't know what the chair thinks, or what my other members here think.
You're right, right.
But I mirror, again, what, what our, our, our planner said, Britton, that's just a little too large.
Would like it to be a smaller footprint.
I think Britton, that's actually four feet, uh, right, Britton?
I just think that when we have to be, there has to be something in this project that improves the site conditions, they've already benefited from a subdivision, and now we're sort of backtracking by using the subdivided piece of property to have parking to substantiate issues. We're putting in more parking, but we're not putting any handicap parking, I just don't see what's the bene, other than the benefit to the applicant of having more retail space, what's the benefit to good planning in this project? It's not FEMA compliant, it doesn't have a handicap successful parking spot, it just, I'm just not seeing it.
Rocko, would you like that?
The only issue, the, I, I think the biggest issue is backing out, is the parking, it's my backing out, and like we stated earlier, that sidewalk is very busy in the summertime. You know, people walking back and forth all the time, because the public bathroom is there.
Right.
So that's, that's really, for me, that's probably the biggest issue here.
Well, we would have no objection of abandoning the, as you called it, the trident parking, and ask for four spots from the... and ask for four spots from the BZA. If the board.
You know, out of all the things, I think that's, that's, that's the, you know, the width of the building, okay? We could talk about it, the privates and the rest of that stuff.
Yeah.
But the big issue, the safety issue is backing out over that parking area on Glover in the summertime.
That makes sense. There's a lot of cars going from the, the community building. And then right across the street is, I think, ten cars of parking. So there's a lot of cars that are going in and out of those two lots. And there's only two from this site that are residential in nature. They're not commercial. And we're adding two more.
Mr. Riley, do you have any comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, we've never even come close to even considering a parking mechanism as this. I mean, this is just abominable from a planning perspective.
Would you like him to finish?
With all due respect, I've been nice and quiet here. I know you want to say something. It's okay, I know you. I, I just, aside, we're, we're having a lot of technical discussions here. The hedge, the this, the that, the setback, the this, the whatever. That's all great, that's all fine. But from a practical perspective, I mean, I just think you're just trying to accomplish way too much here on a very constrained site that has been an ongoing problem with applications for a number of years. People are acquiring or have constrained sites. And they're now trying to maximize the economics out of them. And I get that part. But at some point, you got to accept that there's always so much crap that goes in the bag. And that's where we're at right now. I, I really just think you're just trying to do way too much here. And there's just no way to accomplish it. Now you're saying you want to what, get a variance so that you don't have to provide any parking? Then what's the point of having a zoning code?
Well, you can't, you can't beat us up both ways. Well, I guess you can beat us up both ways.
Well, there's five of us, we can beat you up five ways if you want.
Well, I think that my analysis is ten ways. The, the, the village has a parking issue, I get that. And it's in part created by the wonderful sewer that we've installed, which allows people to expand the uses on their existing properties. So we've, we've substituted one constraint for a, for a past constraint. That's a global problem. That's not a problem that this particular client should be, is in a position to solve. We believe either way, we can make a case to the zoning board. And we'll have to live and die on whatever that case is. This is an attempt to add a little bit more parking to a circumstance that's, that's, that's difficult.
But parking is only one aspect of this, Jim.
All right, well, we're proposing a building that's not oversized for the lot. It, it meets the, it meets the, the coverage requirements. It's not unlike many of the buildings on, this is, this is not B two, this is B one. This is Main Street with stores right up on the street from stem to stern with people walking by in and out in, in, on the sidewalks and with parking provided by either applicants or the village itself behind. And so we're not really asking for anything that goes beyond the scale and scope of other construction and other projects that already exist on.
Okay, thank you. Laurie, do you have any comments you'd like to make on this?
I, you know, I don't, I've been in, I used to go to this building for, I forgot what was there. A decorator or somebody had a store in here. And I used to come back in and out of here. And I, I don't have any problems with backing out of this driveway. But I think the more serious part to me is this, it's not an encroachment on the property line, but it's jammed up on it. And it's a lot of wall. I, I would have less problem with that if there were some insetts along the west side that broke up this, this big wall. Or like Britton mentioned, moving it in four feet. But I, you know, I, backing out of the driveway, I don't have an issue with that.
Well, and keep in mind that, that parking, whatever, whether it's the trident parking, I like that phrase, I wrote it down, or, or some other form of parking will mostly be used by the employees. So the employees won't be coming as well. They'll come at the beginning of their shift and they'll depart at the end of the shift. So it won't be the extreme impact that might be suggested otherwise if it were customers.
I think this, this proposal has a couple precedents that I'm not real comfortable with. And I just think it will set a stage for development and other applicants that, from a personal standpoint, I'm not excited about moving forward with personally.
I think we got it, this is one of the strangest lots I ever saw with the amount of development on it that's already there. Besides this.
And subdivide on subdivide, I mean, it's just nauseating.
You know, one thing about having those three parking spaces, there is, I guess by accident, it does allow for additional landscaping in between the fingers and the walkway going up to the building in the rear, which, you know, reduces a big field of asphalt visually. And I don't have a problem with that.
Would you like to come up and speak? Thank you.
I'm the owner of the property.
I know you.
Well, I just wanted to add to this as.
Would you state your name again?
Larry Weinberger, owner of the property at 104 Main.
Thank you.
The history that you guys talk about is not on my clock. I own it only a short while and I've cleaned it up tremendously. I've invested in it tremendously in an effort to make Main Street more attractive and an effort to make the village more thrive. So I understand all the history that you understand. And just look at it, I'm on the other side of it now, trying to make it only better. I've done a tremendous amount of work. It was very derelict when I got it. So now it is economics and maybe I am trying to pull a little bit more return out of it. But I'm also trying to be, you know, make it fit. So I just want to know, a lot of the history is not something that should be held against me for it. I'm trying to make it positive and have a positive impact.
Nobody's trying to hold it against us. I think, I think it's just an acknowledgement of the reality of what you were getting yourself into when you bought the property. It's a quarter of an acre and it already has three buildings on it. I mean, I don't know how much more you thought you could reasonably get on here. And I, and I get the economics and I'm all in favor of that, that's terrific. But at some point, somebody's got to stand in front of the train and say, enough. I mean, what more do we have to do here?
And economics aren't an issue that we have to deal with.
No, no, I understand.
It's really not our problem.
If, if the zoning allows for it, then my counsel is guiding me in that it's allowed for it. If it's not, it's not. Some of it's personal, like you said, it's a personal opinion whether it should be built or not. That's not for me to get into a personal opinions or not. So I just want to say that I've invested greatly in it. My interest is in a positive impact and setting it back or moving it forward. It was suggested just now that instead of moving it to the line of the park, move it forward more. Well, that could be, we're only building eight hundred feet or so, so it's, it's reached a point where I would move it forward if it was better to move it forward. We'll try and make it accommodate the best way. I just, all I really want to say is that the parking spaces you're concerned about, they're not high traffic going in and out. They're not going to be moving. Car arrives at nine and leaves at six for that. And, and I just wanted to talk about the history there because I'm trying to have a positive impact, not a negative, that's all.
Nobody ever comes up here with a negative. Did you notice that? Nobody has ever stood at that podium and said, you know, I really don't care what you guys in the village say. I'm going to do it my way.
I can.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So eight hundred forty-five square feet carries four parking stalls, so it's a variance issue, right? That's the main issue. And I think we've discussed before, if you brought it under seven fifty, three. You can't go to six hundred because our code says it needs to be at least six feet.
So that's, but that's really like a zoning board discussion. So while I appreciate the, it might meet the front yard, side yard, lot coverage variances just barely because it's right at fifty percent. You know, what I'm hearing is this board may be not be comfortable because it's maybe too much. Four parking spaces, maybe the zoning board agrees with you. You know, at some point, you want to send them over there and see what happens and then come back.
I'd like it to work its way through here before it goes to ZBA. I mean, I, I don't think, I don't know about anybody else, I can only speak.
I'm not even hearing a consensus of, of any kind.
No. So this has got some traction here first.
We can't even send it back to the ZBA with a recommendation, I think, from this board. I don't think there's a consensus.
Well, under, under generally the split wall, you could take a site plan directly to the zoning board if someone wanted to before it even comes to you. But so that, that's why I just bring it up as a.
But they're going to kick it back to us to say, well, what do you want?
I hear a consensus, I hear, we think it's too much, that's what I hear.
Well, I don't think, I don't think I'm hearing a consensus of, you know, yes, but what's, you know, to the extent, yeah, I, I don't know. I'm just saying there's, there's some parking issues, some have it's too close to the property line issues. You know, I don't know, unless, you know, I don't think everybody's sharing the same issues necessarily.
It's too big.
Well, that's, I think we'll kind of agree with that generally.
It's the elephant in the living room.
What would it take to get rid of one spot? Two hundred feet?
Seven fifty. You go from eight forty-three to seven fifty, gets, gets rid of all the spot.
We should examine that. I'll have my team examine that.
And look at the architectural appearance of it too. Try and sell us on something that's going to be an improvement to the visual impact of the property.
I think part of the problem with visual impact is you have a walkway that's to the park and it's just a big clean wall. People, what, you got Main Street that's close to buildings, but those buildings have windows, they have things people can walk into. Now, you do have the hedge, it kind of blocks it.
The B one design guidelines, to make it look right, windows, you know, walk. I mean, we, we did bring that up.
We did talk that last time, you know, that we were talking windows along the side. And the privet hedge, I don't really consider that a topic. You know, I mean, granted, they may be, may be able to be saved, but I, I think there's going to be some significant landscaping required.
It's part of the visual effect of walking. If you could give the building more pleasing, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily need it. Or you could even cut it down so it's only three feet. There's lots of things you can do, but the purpose is to make this not look like a place where you're walking between a six-foot wall or fence. You know, a twelve-foot wall with nothing but clapboard, I mean.
Yeah.
That way, everybody could look at themselves, that'd be great.
People, mural of people walking down motorcycles.
It'd make the village look more crowded. More cars going.
Some say parking spots.
Yeah, we can do that in the parking spaces too. All smoke and mirrors, Jim, I like it.
Well, I mean, we're certainly happy to look at the architectural along the way.
I think this has been very constructive and we're grateful that you're willing to listen to reason. Okay, and you understand that we're all looking out for the welfare of the village.
Well, take everything you said into account, we'll come back with something that's more appealing to you and satisfy everyone.
We look forward to seeing you again. Thank you very much for you. Okay. I have the minutes from the September eleventh meeting. I need a motion to accept this written.
Nailed.
Fall in favor? And we need to be consulted.
Um, so the only thing that I want to draw your attention to, which is your homework. I will send this up digitally. This is my storage, it's coming, coming back. They sent example photographs and then they sent examples of other properties.
Cool.
I think it deserves more than a brief look, so.
Did you look at it?
Yes.
She gave it, she gave it the brief look.
There is a reason. Nope, this is just.
It's homework.
This is just homework.
It's your assignment.
Obviously, the one tonight, we'll see, well, it's in the next couple of days.
So then there'll be no meeting in the back room tonight.
This looks like it was designed by that Lee Brothers, homely and ugly.
That's a new one to me.
I make a motion, could close?
I second.
Fall in favor, aye.